So, the question that I have is around, I mean, this is an issue, obviously, that we discussed at some length in the last meeting, which was, what was it, May 31st?
Right.
2018. We took a vote at that meeting, you know, we don't, I certainly don't remember in, you know, any instance where we've, you know, reconsidered a vote, or reconsidered an issue once we've talked about it and discussed it and voted on it. So before, you know, I would be comfortable at least making this kind of a motion to rescind a vote that we've already made, I would at least like, you know, some information as to why that sort of makes sense in this particular case, because I'm not sure that I would agree to it in any other situation that we've dealt with before. So, is there an explanation, or is...
Okay, the explanation, as far as what I can see, is that we're trying to avoid going to hack, if we possibly can, go into Housing Appeals Court.
Yeah.
Okay? We did not approve an insubstantial change. We said, the board voted to, basically saying that it's a, that it is a substantial change, okay? So, Mr. Ali asked if we could talk about this again. They were gonna send something out, Mr. Haverty was gonna send something out to, to the, to Housing Appeals Court. I talked to town council, she said that we should at least, you know, sit down and talk about this again and see, you know, if there's any change.
Yep.
So, I said, "Okay." So, I asked her, I said, "Well, should we just..." I asked, I told her what I was thinking of doing, and she said that that was fine. So, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but I still believe that we're gonna have to take another vote, just in case anybody's, you know, in case anything changed.
Yeah, I need... I'm sorry.
Can I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
For the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman, Bobrowski, and Haverty here for the applicant. I would note that this is an informal process. This was not a noticed public hearing. It's only, once there's been a determination that a request is substantial, and then there's a public hearing that's noticed, and I believe that's already been sent out.
Right.
However, you're still within a timeframe in which you can reconsider that informal determination and make a new determination that this is, in fact, insubstantial, in which case the public noticed hearing would just be taken off.
Yeah.
So, this is a little bit different from a situation where you've actually held a formally noticed public hearing, and then made a decision and issued that decision. It's informal, you can certainly reconsider that. In fact, even if this had been a formally noticed public hearing, say it had been a special permit, you're always within your rights to accept a motion to reconsider your decision on a special permit or a variance. That sort of formality, again, is not needed here, because this is just an administrative process for you.
Yeah, and I think your points are well taken. So, I understand that there is, I think, you're absolutely right, that there is a distinction between a formal public hearing and what we had last time. So, I certainly agree with that. However, before we vote to rescind what we previously did, just my own personal thought on that is, I mean, it sounds like, hopefully, town council is on her way and should be here soon, so I might like to at least, you know, hear whatever advice she has to say before we actually take a vote to formally rescind what we did previously, because, again, to me, if there is some new issue, some new evidence, some new reason that we weren't previously aware of, which resulted in the vote last time, then maybe that justifies reopening this situation. But if things haven't changed, then, I don't know, I guess I would just hesitate to reopen this again, absent, you know, absent a meaningful reason that wasn't brought forth, or that, for whatever reason, the board just wasn't aware of the last time around. But I do hesitate a little bit, sort of, you know, rehashing what we've, what we've already, seem to have already gone through at some length at the last meeting. Again, anybody else can...
No, I think you're free to agree.
I think you're absolutely right, unless she has something else to bring to the table.
You know, to add on to that, you know, so, for the record, the entire board did listen to the town council, as well as applicant, as well as our own town council's advice. After hearing all the facts, the board voted the way it is. And, so, now, you know, to cancel this meeting, cancel that vote, and revote again, what can we keep on doing for, if, in one, this is one issue, if the, tomorrow, if another issue comes in before the board, if one member or the applicant does not like it the way they voted, can we revote again? And if so, how many times we can keep revoting it? And what will the, the public confidence, public confidence in ZBA will be? The public's, we are dragging the publics again to this board, we voted on that day the way it is, and now we are, say, suppose if I voted yes, can I drag it again to vote no? It happens on that day, we listen to that thing, we voted on it. So, I don't think that there is no reason for a revote today. And, again, the one other thing is, even for this meeting, for the record, I did oppose to hold a meeting. I did not want to hold a meeting. It's waste of our time, the waste of ZBA, entire ZBA time, and it's waste of town council's time.
So, okay, so, if we don't want, if you don't want...
I'm not done.
Okay.
I think, you know, the entire board has to protect our ZBA's integrity. By revoting today, I think, you know, we will lose the, for the reason of, for the reason, if we are afraid of things, the applicant will take this issue to the court, we are, we don't know what the court is going to say.
They're gonna rule against us.
Let the court decide.
That's how we're in housing, I already talked to town council about this, she already told me.
Hold on.
The housing authority court is going to rule against us.
Then, we shouldn't be, this should be decided by the town council, and this should be decided by the, who are deciding.
Okay, so let's not, so let's not revote, okay? Then what we're gonna do is, on the 29th of this month, we'll have a public hearing, it's already been posted in the paper, Toby has everything set up to go, and we're gonna leave it at that. That's the last thing. And even with the public hearing, even, we'll have to vote again, and even if we vote that we don't believe that it's insubstantial change, they're gonna go to Housing Appeals Court, and we're gonna lose, and they're gonna get what they want. So, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to avoid...
I have to add on one thing, you know, we, as a board, we looked at the case, we looked at it on that day, we looked at all the evidence on that day, the board member decided it. That's why we have a five-member board to make a decision. So, if we are afraid of a, any case that's going to the court, then we should not be having a, this board is, will lose the confidence before the public. This board should not be there.
That isn't, that's...
This should be decided by the town council.
But that's not the issue. The issue is, if it goes to Housing Appeals Court, then that means we have to spend more money on town council, okay? Now, just to go one step further, the Board of Selectment is always complaining about how much money we're spending on town council. Here, we have an opportunity to change that, to try to work something out where we don't have to use town council and go to Housing Appeals Court, which is gonna cost us even more money, okay? That's the, that's the point of the fact. If you want it, if you want to spend more money, then fine, we'll, we'll set up, the special, the public hearing is set up for June 29th, it's in the newspaper, Toby has everything, all the butters, everything's ready to go, all that needs to be done is mailed. So, if you don't want to continue with this, then that'll be, that's, then we can just say, "Okay, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do the public hearing," and that'll be it.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify the process, so, what happens is, the applicant requests the modification, the board has the time period to make a determination that the change is insubstantial or substantial. If the board determines that the change is substantial, it holds a public hearing. That public hearing is not to determine whether or not the change is substantial or insubstantial, it's to determine whether or not the board is required to approve that change. And, again, I heard absolutely no statement, testimony, or otherwise, that suggests that there is a issue or concern that would support a denial of the requested modification. That being said, I think that the vote that the board took, and the sense that I'm getting from this board tonight, there's really no point in my client participating in that process, because I know how it's gonna turn out, and we're gonna wind up right back at Housing Appeals Committee. However, there is an alternative process that is set up in the regulations, that process allows the applicants to file an appeal of the determination that the change is substantial or insubstantial. And it's a much simpler process, and it's one in which, if this board chooses not to reconsider its prior determination, we will go forward and pursue that process, which means that your scheduled hearing for June 29th is automatically going to be stayed, because we'll be in an appeal process.
So, that means we would have that hearing?
You would not have that hearing.
Okay.
We would go directly to the Housing Appeals Committee and ask them to overturn this board's decision that the proposed modification is insubstantial, or is not insubstantial. And I would note, the regulations are as clear as a bell, they spell it right out. An increase in the number of bedrooms that is less than 10% is not substantial. Nothing that was discussed at the last hearing before this board suggested any, at all, that it was substantial. There was not a single thing that was raised that would say that adding these additional bedrooms is going to cause a problem, that takes this outside of the determination of the regulations that it would be insubstantial. There's nothing.
So, basically, whatever stipulated in the comprehensive permit, okay, the approved comprehensive permit, it states in there, Toby, do you have a copy of that, the comprehensive permit?
I put it on here.
Okay. This is the revised comprehensive permit, okay? Amended. Okay, so, in this document, it states, "Approval by the Town of West Boylston Board of Appeal Planning Board in its capacity as the comprehensive permit granting authority pursuant to general law chapter 40B. None of the units in the project shall be age restricted, the unit mix shall be as followed as shown on the final plans. Final plans. Building A, 14 units comprised of six two-bedroom units and eight three-bedroom units. Building B, 28 two-bedroom units. And here's the kicker, Building C, 38 units comprised of 14 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. Now, the applicant is saying that nine of those one-bedrooms had a den, have a den with them. Well, that's not what the comprehensive permit. If that was the case, then the comprehensive permit should have read, "Building C, 38 units comprised of nine one-bedrooms with den, five one-bedrooms, and 24 two-bedrooms," okay? Now, I went back and I looked at all the plans from the building inspector, the final plans, okay? And the only thing that shows anything is, with a one-bedroom den, those nine units, is the document that was received from Mr., let me see, what's his name, Mr. Ali's architect.
Jerome Dixon.
Yeah, saying that. And I want this into the record, Toby. This is from the architect, Jerome Dixon. "To whom it may concern, rooms that are not bedrooms shall have French doors, glass panels, or similar solutions which are appropriate for spaces like studies, offices, or dens which do not require visual privacy. Please let me know if you have any questions," okay? He also sent a plan. Now, the plan that he sent shows that those nine units have a den in them. Well, the building inspector's final plans that he approved doesn't show that, okay?
Can you give me the dates?
The date, um, May 2nd, okay? The comprehensive permit, which is the biggest document that we have, that we have to go by, does not state anything about nine one-bedrooms with dens. It was never talked, there's only three members on this board that would, that dealt through this whole process, myself, Mr. Raj, and Mr. Wilkis, Wickis, okay? Nothing was ever, I went back and looked at anything and everything I could, nothing, absolutely nothing, was ever just talked about with not, with one-bedrooms with a den. So, now, with this statement coming back and saying...
This is a modification.
But if, if Mr. Ali wanted to do that, why did, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish, sir, okay? Why is it now, at the 13th hour, when everything is built, everything is rented, now, all of a sudden, we want to change those? Why wasn't this done when Building C was built? Though, he knew those change, he knew he made those changes, that should, and if, if he didn't have to come to us, he should have at least gone to the building inspector, so that the building inspector could see if those changes were up to the code, building code, which he has every right to do. Unfortunately, he's on vacation today, so he couldn't be here. So, you know, this is what I would understand, 40B dictates everything, but what about this comprehensive permit? Is this, is this document a piece of garbage?
No, Mr. Chairman, the document is not a piece of garbage. However, 760 CMR 56.0511 allows the applicant to request modifications of a comprehensive permit that has been issued. And there's no time limitation as to when those modifications can be requested, it could be 15 years later, in a building already completed, and an applicant could come in and ask you to make a change.
Again, yes, he can ask for a modification.
And the, and the regulations also have, the regulations also have a list of what will be, what will constitute a substantial change, and what will constitute an insubstantial change.
But here, if you talk, you're quoting 760 CMR 5611, okay? Changes after issuance of a permit, okay? And I'm just gonna read. "If a comprehensive permit is granted by the board, including by order of the committee pursuant to 76 CMR 56075, an applicant desires to change the details of the project as approved by the board or the committee, it shall promptly, promptly..." And if you look up the dictionary, the word promptly, it means immediately, which means that when this was done, when Building C was being built, that's when he should have came to the board and requested the change. Not wait until the whole project is almost done, all the units are rented, and now he wants to change the nine bedrooms and saying that they're done. No, it's a false statement. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
It's not in the comprehensive permit, it says promptly, that means immediately, he didn't do it, he's waiting till the ninth minute. So, as far as I'm concerned, it is a substantial change. I'm sorry, it's a, it's a substantial change. He should have came to us when the building was being done.
You're conflating two separate things, Mr. Chairman. I'm not disagreeing that this should have come to the board sooner. But it didn't, and we are here now, we are following the proper process. And all we're asking is, this board also follow the proper process, which is to review the regulations and make its determination consistent with those regulations. And those regulations are very clear, that an increase in the number of bedrooms of less than 10% is insubstantial, absent a showing by a board of some harm that would lead it to be substantial, and this board hasn't identified anything of that nature.
Okay. To that point, the developer is not a new, new developer, he's a very seasoned developer, he does knows what he is doing. In this town, we do need one-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom apartment, and a three-bedroom apartment. There are, the rental rates are even affordable rentals. One bedroom is $1,275. The two-bedroom, this is for affordable, $1,530. In this town, we do need one-bedrooms. That's the reason, when we were talking about the comprehensive permit, when we were negotiate, when we were allowing the permit, we, we wanted 14 one-bedroom apartments. And among the 14, there are four goes to the affordable units. That leaves only one for the regular rent, for the normal people who can rent in that complex. Even then, they cannot rent it. The rents, I know that the rents are decided by, one bedroom, two bath plus den, $1,800. Two bedroom, one bath, $1,575, from, the starting rent is that amount. Two bedroom, two bath, $1,700. But, one bedroom, two bath, one den is $1,800. Nobody can, nobody can rent, nobody can, able to rent it. I think, the only reason, he knows it, he, he does, he did not provide any of the documentations before building the buildings. Secondly, this is only to make a profit of two bedrooms. When you make a two bedrooms, it does, it does affects the, our school systems, it does affects the sewer system, it does affects our, so, public safety systems, police, fire, whatnot. And also, it does affects the parking situation in that complex. So, with all this, these are all my reasoning. And also, this may be a, once, you know, changes, that Mr. Ali did change so many different things without the board's concern. So many changes in that project, so many changes, I'm not going to list in all of those things, so many of those things, changes.
To clarify, how we got there? I mean, this board...
So, we have, we have...
My client had an approved project, that was a larger-sized project with another story on this building, and my client was put in the position where he had to agree to reduce that story...
First of all, he should have not agreed at that time, he did agree.
And yet, that is what happened.
He did, he did agree, and now in turn, now in turn...
And so, then, moving forward, he began construction of that building, and in constructing that building, came to find out that the elimination of the elevators and other issues that were resulting from the reduction in the number of stories, left a lot of extra space in what was being constructed. And that is why these other bedrooms, or dens, if you want to say, were incorporated during the construction period. It was not something that was thought of ahead of time.
Yeah.
That's how we wound up, where we wound up.
Yeah. But, there was a clear architect plan, architect plan, that was submitted to the board, that's the plan, we looked at it, we approved it.
Absolutely.
In that plan, all the one-bedroom dimensions, all the one-bedroom apartment, how big the bathroom, how big this, all the dimensions are there. How this now, all of the sudden, if it is an increased area, increased den, and also only nine bedrooms as an increased area, what happened to the other one-bedroom apartment? So, these are all raises a red flag over there. Anyway, so, we have made the decisions, I have given a lot of reasons, I have made my decisions, and if you do not like the decisions, you know, it's up to the, up to you and your client to do whatever necessary steps to take.
So, to address the reasons you brought up, school-aged children, not a legitimate reason for a board to make any decision regarding check of 40B. Sewerage is not gonna be significant enough to be even noticed. We talked about parking at the last hearing.
That's your opinion.
There is more than a sufficient amount of parking for these extra bedrooms, we have in excess of what's required.
So, that's your opinion.
That is my...
The board, you know, the board, we have, the board decided. So, my, my vote is not going to be changed, I am very reluctant, I'm not going to take another vote today.
Can I speak? First of all, the parking thing, we had parking, this parking lot was never changed, this was designed for 1960年代. And second of all, Raj, as a member, he has never voted for this project, then created always a heat for no reason. Heat doesn't like 40B projects. If he likes 40B projects, I don't know what, what against things he has about 40B projects, I've been in this process for two and a half years in this board, he has not voted once on a 40B project for anything, on this project. There's no reason for him not to like a developer or a project which is approved by the state, not to like it. If he doesn't like a 40B project, he doesn't have a right to sit there.
So, the thing is, you know, you are, you have no authority to say, "Where I can sit, or where I can stand, or not..."
No, I'm not taking authority.
Okay? So, it's not your authority. I'm a board member, okay?
You called me and told me that you don't like that project.
So, the thing is, you know, what I'm trying to say here is, you know, you said one-bedroom apartment, you should have sticked with the one-bedroom apartment. Now, you are coming to two-bedroom apartment, that's the thing, I don't like it, that's the thing, in my view, in my view...
Raj, you're repeating stuff for no reason.
Anyway.
You're repeating stuff for no reason.
No, you are accusing me of something.
All right.
Okay?
Let me ask this question, okay? Those nine units that supposedly have a den in them, okay, those were rented, I'm assuming those were rented, okay?
Presume, is that correct?
Yes, okay. So, now, you're gonna change those to a two-bedroom, so now, people's rent is gonna go...
No, those are one-bedroom dens, it doesn't have a regular door, it has a French door which has a glass in it.
Right.
And it has been given it to the building inspector, with, you read the letter from my architect, and building inspector has agreed that if there is no privacy in a room, it's not considered as a bedroom.
Okay, that, I understand that, but what I'm saying, though, is, is that, okay, I'm gonna use an example. One of the examples that you have listed here is C315, which is a one-bedroom with den, okay? You want to make that, that's one of the nine, so you want to make that now a two-bedroom unit. So, if that is rented, a person is living in there, is living in a one-bedroom with supposedly a den...
No, it is...
And now, hold on, let me finish now, and now it's gonna become a two-bedroom unit, which means that their rent is gonna go from $1,275 to $1,530. I mean, that's, that's...
You're talking affordable units.
That's affordable. That's what I'm talking about.
If it's not affordable, that's market unit.
But it's still gonna go up. And don't tell me it's not gonna be, it's only gonna be $50, because I don't, I don't believe that.
Doesn't want to...
You'd have to show me the difference, you know? Besides that, Carolyn Murray, KP Law, town council is here, I'd like to hear from her. One of the issues that we're talking about, we were gonna try to... Mr. Olson had some concerns about that, Raj had some concerns about that, everybody on the board basically had some concerns about that. So, we want you to weigh in and explain to the board and everybody else, you know, the pros and cons of this, of what we did, and what's, what could happen, and all, and about this, because I know that in the letter that Mr. Haverty sent, it basically states at the bottom that, okay, to, it states that, where the heck is it, I know I read it here somewhere. Okay, somewhere, it's in here, I saw it, that if we didn't do it, we have 30 days to make a decision.
For a public hearing?
For a public hearing.
And I don't see that in here, I only see that in there, I don't know. All right, so, town council, please, just keep here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, first of all, my apologies for being late, I, my apologies to Mr. Wickis. When you changed the meeting to today, as I told the chairman, I had a previously scheduled mediation in federal court in Boston, and when I told the judge I needed to leave, she asked me to stay for one more exchange, since the parties were close, and I think when a federal court judge asks you to stay for one more exchange, you stay, and she assured me that the West Boylston ZBA would understand my being a little tardy, so, my apologies for that. With respect to the...
Before you go, one grant that judge's name, we're gonna write it here.
Bull.
Tell him you don't understand, but anyways, I'm sorry, go ahead.
With respect to the modification that's been requested here, with respect to the bedroom allocation, I previously advised the board that there are certain things that under the DHCD guidelines, there are certain things that they specifically say generally will not be considered a substantial change, and other things that would be considered a substantial change. And specifically, one of the things that they call out, as being something that generally will not be a substantial change, is a change in the number of bedrooms within individual units, if the changes do not alter the overall bedroom count of the proposed housing by more than 10%. I did the math on this when the request came in, and the increase of nine bedrooms is under the 10%. So, you have the DHCD guidelines that are rather strongly worded in favor of this board finding this to be an insubstantial modification. But as far as the process, when you receive a request for a modification, the board has 20 days to decide whether that request is substantial or insubstantial. If it's determined to be substantial, you need to then schedule a public hearing, and the board needs to schedule that public hearing within 30 days of the date that you make that determination, that it was a substantial modification. Now, as I understand your vote of May 31st, when this modification was before you, that the majority of this board voted to find that this request of an increase of nine bedrooms was a substantial modification. That being the case, your deadline for opening the public hearing in this matter is June 30th, which is a Saturday. You also know that you're well aware that you're required to advertise every public hearing at least two weeks in advance, and send out notices to a butters. That being the case, we had to place an ad in the newspaper, which I hope went in this week, advertising a public hearing to be opened two weeks from tonight. If you had not done that, then your failure to act within those 30 days would be deemed constructive approval of the modification. Now, there's also another parallel timeframe that is running. Now, there's also another parallel timeframe that is running. The applicant has the choice at this point. If the applicant disagrees with your determination about the modification, as the applicant has clearly expressed, the applicant has the right to appeal this directly to the Housing Appeals Committee within twenty days, which would be next week. So the purpose, as I understood it for tonight's meeting, was that, given the DHCD regulations, that strongly suggests that this is an insubstantial modification, that if this were to go to the Housing Appeals Committee for a hearing, I am not a betting person. I don't even buy lottery tickets. But I think there's a very strong suggestion that the Housing Appeals Committee would disagree with the board, find the increase of nine bedrooms that's under the ten percent as stated in their guidelines, they'd very likely find this to be an insubstantial modification. That being the case, where you've already made your finding, and if the decision tonight is that you still hold to this idea that you feel this is a substantial modification, the applicant has another option, in my opinion. And I didn't have an opportunity to discuss this with Mr. Haverty beforehand, and I wish I had. There's also provision in the regulations so they say that the applicant, when there is a pending proceeding before the board, could elect to not go forward with the appeal to the HAC, but could continue to go forward with the process before the board and reserve all rights to still challenge the board's determination. That's their decision to make. That is not something that we can demand or compel in any way, but that is certainly an option. Given the fact that the applicant's been very clear from the outset that they feel this is an insubstantial modification, my guess would be they're not going to submit themselves to a substantial modification hearing before this board. I think they would be more likely to directly appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. That's procedurally where you are at in this moment.
Okay, so, what's the process? If he implies that, how does that process work? Can you explain that to us?
The appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee would cause there to be a hearing up at the committee level, and then ultimately a decision would be rendered on the modification.
What kind of a timeframe are we looking at? I know you have personal experience-
The regulations, the regulations refer to an expedited process.
Reality is different.
Something like this typically, and Mr. Haverty, I'll jump in if I've got my timetable wrong. I think they typically try to render a decision within thirty days of that actually hearing it, but these deadlines are fixed.
So the likely process in front of the Housing Appeals Committee, every time someone files an initial pleading with the Housing Appeals Committee, they hold a conference of counsel within twenty or thirty days. At that conference of counsel, really all they do is have a discussion as to how they're going to proceed. In this instance, I don't think there'll be any issues of fact that would be in dispute, so we would proceed immediately to a summary decision, file our motions, wait for the committee to make a decision.
Would that all happen on the same day?
No.
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 No. The conference of counsel would occur first, and then submittals would happen.
So basically, that conference between yourself and Mr. Haverty would be to see if is, if either Mr. Ali changed his mind or whether the board changed their mind.
Well, to be clear, the conference would also involve the Housing Appeals Committee, a hearing officer through the Housing Appeals Committee as well. And it would essentially look to see what position each party happens to be. Has, is there a possibility of resolution? Has there been any change in position on either side, that sort of thing? And if we are going to go forward for a hearing, then we pull out our calendars and we set hearing dates.
Typically, the Housing Appeals Committee, if we hadn't come here for this hearing tonight, the Housing Appeals Committee would look at us and say, we think that this is something you should reconsider, why don't we send this back to the board for them to take a second look at it and see what they have to say? At that point, we would object to this process because you guys would have already denied us on the second look, you know, if we wind up in front of the Housing Appeals Committee.
Where is the subsidizing agency? Where do they fit into all of this? Because I know that the last meeting, Mr. Haverty may comment that, you know, it still had to go to them for final approval. So, with all of this going on, they're not going to make, is it a fact that they will not make a decision until this is rectified, this situation is rectified? Whether it's rectified here at the board level or whether it's rectified at Housing Appeals Court?
I can't entirely speak for what the subsidizing agency will or will not do. That tends to be more of a discussion between the applicant and the subsidizing agency. But I do know that there is final approval that typically does not come until they consider the project to be final. And where there's a pending modification-
So, final approval has already occurred. You're not allowed to commence construction until you receive final approval from the subsidizing agency. But when you're doing a modification, subsidizing agency wants to be made aware of what changes are being made. So, these changes, as I noted at the last meeting, will be sent to the subsidizing agency. They will be reviewed and signed off.
So have you done that?
I have sent them a copy of what we have submitted for the modification.
Can I ask, have you heard anything from them?
The only thing that I've heard from, they're waiting. What I've heard from them is, can you give me an update? What is the status of the submittal to the board? So I have informed them that my last correspondence with Judy Jacobson from MHP was that the board made a determination that the change was substantial and that it is our intention to appeal that determination to the Housing Appeals Committee.
So that sounds to me like they're not going to do anything until this issue is-
There's nothing for them to do until that.
Okay. So what do you recommend? It doesn't seem like the board wants to change their mind. So, they still, the vote was three to two that they felt that it was a substantial change. Resending the vote isn't going to change the vote that was done on May thirty first. We've already posted, Toby and I already sent the stuff to the newspaper. Toby, was it in the paper today?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be today and then next Friday. So then that means the public hearing is scheduled for. All that we have, we got the abutters, list of the abutters. Toby's already stuffed the envelopes, sealed them, and labeled them. The only thing that's left to do is put the postage on there and get them out into the mail. So, as town council advises, what is our next step? What should we do?
Well-
I think that it's going to be a, do you want to discuss what next step in a open meeting?
We don't have an executive session posted, do you?
No. No, but still enough.
I'm sorry.
You will be defending the town's decision, so, how much comfortable you are discussing this in a open meeting?
Well, I think most of what I've said-
So, the thing, you know, before you are here, what I, what the board, Chris Olson, Netwosian, and the board member, we all read your recommendations. And we did hear all the facts laid down by Mr. Ali's counsel. So, that day, you know, we took a vote, and the vote turned out to be that way. So, what I'm thinking, you know, what the board now think is, to rescind the vote will be sending a strong signal for the future issues. Not only that, it will, we will lose the confidence in the, from the public. Why we have a ZBA board, say, suppose if you go, if the ZBA denied one of the issues, oh, we can always go back, reconsideration. So that's where we are here. If we have to go defend our case, you will be defending. Whatever the DHCD does, let them do it. That's the, that's the reason, you know, the vote came out the way it was. So, if the vote was yes, if I, if I would have thought, if I say, oh, I want another reconsideration, are we going to do that? No. That's the way, that, the process, and now the process is the one in question. So, and also, you know, in future, tomorrow what happens? I don't know what's the, what they are going to do. This is all imagining so many imaginary factors. What they are going to do, they are going to take in the housing court or they are going to take it to anywhere. And also, you know, are we going to defend the case? These are all, we are imagining so many factors here. I don't want to speculate anything at this meeting. We are not here for the 40B regulation class. That's how I feel like.
Just to let you know one aspect, the thing about you brought up about schools, Mr. Haverty's absolutely correct. So, the thing is, you know- Let me just finish, please, okay? At the last conference that I went to, the Housing Institute, which was a two day conference, which talked all about all of this, school has nothing to do with anything. They don't take that into any consideration. So, you know, so when people say, oh, well, you know, it's going to overflow our schools, it doesn't matter, okay?
So, for me, we voted the way it was. The board voted the way it was. And whatever the agency has to decide, or whatever the agency has to do, whatever they have to, we have to follow through. That's mine.
All right, so Mr. Haverty, what do you want to do? Tell me what you want me, what you want to do. Are you just going to say, you don't want, you don't want to go to the public hearing and you're going to go directly to HAP?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. So, from everything that I've heard, I haven't heard a single statement that suggests that the concern is that the proposal is substantial and therefore requires a public hearing, and then board members are inclined to vote in favor at a public hearing. Everything I'm hearing is, we don't want to approve the modification you have proposed, which suggests to me there's really no point in moving forward with a public hearing. So, if the board determines tonight that they don't want to reopen this and don't want to reconsider their previous vote, on Monday we will file, we'll take this out of the realm of speculation. On Monday, we will file with the Housing Appeals Committee.
Okay, so that basically does away with the-
Then there'll be no need for the hearing.
So that we can just cancel that. Okay, anybody on the board have anything else to say? Ask what I, old Dennis. Content with that?
My issue is, honestly, tonight at this meeting, I'm less concerned about the issue of substantial versus insubstantial change, and I'm more interested in the process of why would we be motivated to revisit an issue that we've- I know it wasn't a public hearing, and I think that's, it's a valid reason, a difference.
So, understand, the reason we're here tonight is because we're trying to save ourselves and the town, the expense of us showing up at a Housing Appeals Committee conference of counsel, at which time, in this sort of situation, and I've been involved in dozens of these, where there really isn't a lot of support for whatever decision a municipality has made on a modification request, and they will simply tell the parties, go back and try to get this worked out. So, it didn't make a lot of sense for us to file the appeal with the Housing Appeals Committee, go to a conference of counsel and have them say, you know what? You should go back to the board and have them reconsider their decision. We're trying to eliminate the cost of those steps for both us and for you, and get it done now. That's why we're here. This is something that is very, very different from the normal type of application you're going to see. It's subject to a completely different set of rules, and it is an administrative process. It is not a public hearing process at this stage. So that's why it is different. That is why you are not setting any precedent if you make a determination to reopen the hearing and reconsider, or not even reopen the hearing, but reconsider your previous decision.
Understood.
So I would request that, since we came all the way out here, the board at least take a vote on the matter of rescinding the original determination.
Why would we need to, I mean, if the board feels that what we voted for on May thirty first is the bottom line, then why would we even bother rescinding? The purpose of rescinding was to see if there was any new information, if we, there was any new information, plus whatever town council could, information that town council could provide to us, which she did, you know, to see if anybody had a chance to, you know, rethink all of this and maybe, you know, change their vote. But obviously, the board doesn't feel that way.
If I may-
We haven't heard from all the members, Mr. Chairman.
I asked, and nobody said anything else to say?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, a motion could certainly be offered, and members could then actually register how they really feel on the record. Maybe that motion will get a second, who knows? If your vote stays as it is, the town's been in person legal expense defending this decision. And beyond just the expense, which is obviously something that perhaps isn't as important to perhaps the Senate Board of Appeals as it sometimes is to the selectman in the town administrator's office, is still a real factor to consider. And there is then the other aspect of, well, what is the basis for finding it to be substantial, as opposed to insubstantial, in light of the regulations? So there's going to be a need for this board to articulate some reasons if this is going to go forward to a hearing at the Housing Appeals Committee. Because I don't think I'm hearing anyone here suggest that we just go through the motions and wave the white flag and let the Housing Appeals Committee simply overturn your decision. So if there's going to be a defense of your decision, there has to be a basis for defending that decision. I wasn't at your meeting on the thirty first, so have to review the record for that and see what we can glean from it. But there will also be some burden put upon this board for coming back to you to articulate those reasons so that those arguments can be presented to the Housing Appeals Committee.
So if they decide to hold a hearing, you know, after the two councils meet, if they decide to hold a hearing, do we have to testify? Does the board have to testify? Or anybody from the board have to testify to, you know, for the substantial change justification part? Or is that, or do we just, you know, you're our mouthpiece?
It's a, it depends on how it all unfolds, to be honest. As Mr. Haverty said, in some ways, there is a lot of, you know, this isn't like the original 40B appeal where your engineer says A and our peer reviewer says B, and we've got to figure out who might be right, who might be wrong, or maybe the answer lies somewhere in the middle. I think to a certain extent, a lot of it is going to be simply legal argument. But that doesn't mean that there won't be, I mean, there will be something. You know, if the concern is water and sewer, for example, well, what is the basis for saying that? Beyond just speculation?
What about the building inspector? Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight because he's on vacation. The thing is, is that the plans, this was brought up at the May thirty first meeting. The plans that he approved are not the plans that this project was built on, okay? Now, here it is, the thirteenth hour, and now, you know, after all these buildings have been built, all these apartments have been rented, now all of a sudden, we want to do this modification. The other thing that I brought up before you got here was, is that this comprehensive permit, amended comprehensive permit, states that in Building C, there's thirty eight units comprised of fourteen one bedroom units and twenty four two bedroom units. There's nothing in there that says anything about one bedroom units with a den. If that was the case-
There's also nothing in there that says no dens.
I'm sorry?
There's also nothing in there that says no dens. I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying. And I'm not going to speak for the building inspector, that's not my place. But with every project, whether it is a 40B or some other type of project that is done in this town, you are, you always request, and you should always receive as-built plans when that project is done. Because rarely is a project ever actually constructed exactly as it is proposed before the permitting board. There's all, there's invariably changes to it.
And I understand, and I understand that completely. But what I'm saying though is, even if he didn't have to, even if he didn't have to come to us, he should have at least gone to the building inspector and told the building, because he moved staircases, he moved sto-, you know, that could have been a, something within the building code. He didn't do that. That's, that's the problem.
And I'm not defend, I'm not defending how the developer approached this, I'm not.
I think, you know, a lot of information you are saying, and I am not comfortable to discuss in a open meeting. I think, you know, as a town council for the town, we should be having an executive session. And that in the, I don't know, I may be wrong, but I feel like, you know, we should discuss these, just in case if it goes to the court. We should be discussing, we will be discussing it on the executive session rather than a open meeting.
Yes, however, you also have to bear in mind that the decisions that you make and the decisions that get defended are based on information that's actually in the record.
And not what's discussed in executive-
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily what is discussed between us in the executive session. If this goes to an appeal- If this goes to an appeal, there will be a need for an executive session to have that precise discussion. But the reasons why you find this to be a substantial modification, that all has to be a matter of discussion in open session.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just address sort of the process questions that was just discussed previously, to the extent that there is a defense of the board's decision at the Housing Appeals Committee, I think the board needs to be cognizant of the fact that the presumption is going to weigh heavily in favor of the applicant, simply because of the regulations in their presumption that, or an increase at less than 10% is generally insubstantial. In order to overcome that, the board is going to have to put forth evidence that supports their position that in fact it is substantial, and that sort of evidence, if you're talking about parking, you're going to have to have an expert on parking that can explain why the parking that's proposed for this project, which was based on 96 units, is insufficient for 80 units with an extra nine bedrooms. If it's based on wastewater, you're going to have to have someone testifying why the minimal increase in wastewater is going to have an impact in your system that's substantial. There is, if this goes through a hearing process, there is a significant cost that's going to be borne by the town to defend this decision.
Because the sewer, sewer capacity study was done already, we have the sewer capacity I think, you know, so now, again, you know, I did, I did give my reasoning, I did give my reasonings, and those reasonings, I don't know whether it will, it'll be a reasoning for the housing court, but that's, all I said was, you know, I did give the reasonings, one, two, three, four. So that's my reasoning, and also, I'm not worried about the housing court. Let the, whatever that happens, it happens. So I will, and also, you know, for today, there is no reason for taking a revote on this. That's my view.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Mr. Ali, you have something then that suggest, from a town department, suggesting that there's sufficient sewer capacity?
Yes, there was a study done for 96 units, there are an extra 57 houses which we could connect to the sewer system apartment project. That was done in 2015.
Okay, so this isn't anything new with someone looking at the change of the nine bedrooms and making a determination?
Yeah, yeah. That was for 96 units.
It's in the comprehensive pay, permit.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about some new review of the plan.
We have a sewer, sewer study already done.
Again, this, this is nine bedrooms, I, I find it difficult to believe the, the board would be able to come up with expert evidence to support the claim that that is rendering this a substantial change.
Okay, town council, so should we just vote on the rescind, and however that goes, just let that go, or what?
I think it is worth at least putting a, a motion on the record, you know, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Olson, would you read that, please?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make this motion. A motion to rescind the vote of May 31st, 2018, of the previous motion to determine that the proposed modification of nine more bedroom units to two nine, two-bedroom units is an insubstantial change.
Okay, do I have a second? It's not going to hurt the votes. Nobody's going to second it. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and you're going to file for the HAC on, on Monday?
Correct.
You will send a copy of that to town council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Before then, you know, Toby, for the record, as a ZBA member, as well as a lack of this ZBA board, I do like to request an agenda item for reorganizing the board in our next meeting, next ZBA meeting. I have requested a couple of times, and, you know, the worst-
And the next one is Ju, July 19th, right?
Whatever the next meeting, I would like to have an agenda item.
Right, July 19th, that's the next meeting.
But we do have a public hearing, but-
No, it's been canceled.
He could change his mind.
Yeah, that was the 29th.
Yeah, so that's been canceled.
So it's been-
Because he's going to, he just said that he doesn't, doesn't want, there's no need for it.
He did this.
He's going to hap. Isn't that what he just said?
Right, you said something about July 19th, the one that was just effectively canceled tonight, it was June 29th.
That's what I meant.
So for the record, you know, they did the same thing last meeting. They said, "I'm going to appeal to the housing court." Immediately, they wanted a copy, they ran out, and this thing, this revelation happened. So this is a posted public hearing, until we cancel it, until they come back and cancel it, until we get in anything in record, I don't, I do not want to do anything on this. As well as for the record, you know, last ZBA meeting, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, the price differences according to the, Mr. Ali, it's $50. That's not true. So unless I see evidence in, in the paper, whatever the statement, I don't want to take it as a face value.
Okay, so the next scheduled meeting for the ZBA is July 19th at 7:00. Okay? Okay, so you, if he's, if Mr. Habbity said that he's going to file to hap, obviously, he'll send you a copy, so you should have it Monday or Tuesday, right?
And I will let you know as soon as I do.
And as soon as you do, so as soon as we get that, that it's official, then we can go ahead and cancel the public hearing.
Yes.
I could just put it on the website, on the town website, that the public hearing is canceled. Okay? All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor, Sam?
All right.